All right.
Is is
Having that we had the September fourteenth and October thirteenth minutes unanimously approved, the next item of business would be a matter of an appeal from Mark Osborne at two, five, one, four, three, East Roy Court for a front yard setback variance of four of nine point four, two square feet for a setback of thirty point six, five feet where forty point zero, seven is required. And that's governed under section forty dash four point oh, three, R one A through R one E, one family districts dimensional requirements. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Hank. Uh, who would like to speak for the progress for the project, please?
Uh, this is Joan Avitski. I'm the architect. The, uh, the owner said today he was going to be online, but I'll speak for him gladly.
Yep.
We're here.
Well, there we go.
We're here.
Okay.
Yeah, we're here.
Very good.
And issues getting in, so it's coming twice.
Technical issues.
We wanted you to have bad mark.
Yes. Mark. I think you guys should speak to your own agenda item. And if you need technical expertise, I'd be glad to support you as always.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll start. And then if there's anything we miss out, Joe, or anything you want to add, we'll, you can add in afterwards. But, uh, so hi, everybody. Thanks for, uh, for letting us show you our plans and coming together before the holiday season. Um, so basically we've, we've lived here in Hudson Woods for just about 10 years. I love, love the neighborhood. And the more we've, we didn't really know too much about hunting towards when we moved in and over the years, we've really got embedded into the community. Um, love the neighborhood, love everything about it. People are great. All the activities that you've, that we have for all the ages, right? It's just such a place to stay, you know? And this is our, we want to make this our forever home. So as, as we've, you know, like everybody else, you go through the inside of your house, you decorate it and things like that. Um, and then it seems invariably you get to that one big project that you want to do on your house. So Rochelle and I sort of sat down and we talked about what do we, what, what do we need from this house to make it our home that we live in forever? So we came up with five, five items that we wanted to address. So one was my office, which we're in right now. So you can see the slanted ceiling, right? So that's the part that's on the back of the, um, uh, on the back of the house. So I've, I've worked at home for 10 years. So this isn't a COVID work at home thing. This is my office, has been my room for 10 years. Um, so it'd be nice to have not, not bang my head on the ceiling and be able to walk around a little bit. Um, so that was the one, one thing for me. Then we looked at the way our entryway functions and with two kids, as like everybody else, you get all your coats, all the shoes pile up. And I still find it amazing that nobody's broken their neck by tripping over all that stuff when they come in. So that, so we wanted the solution to fix that. Um, then we came to the kitchen. So the kitchen, as far as we know, is the original footprint when, to when the house was built in nineteen forty seven. So it just does, it doesn't function for us. So we, we like to entertain Rochelle.
I like to cook.
She loves to cook, right? So it was just like always too cramped because every gathering, everyone's always in the kitchen. So we wanted to say, what, what, what do we need to do to the kitchen to make it, to make us love this and work well and flow and everything like that? So that was the third item. The fourth was our bedroom. So it's again, like as everybody else that's got a house that's sort of 70 years old, the closets are tiny. Um, the rooms are small and looking forward to, you know, when we're old and need a bit more support going around the house. We know we'll need a main floor, continue with the main floor bedroom and make it bigger so we can get around okay in there. Um, and then the last item was being able to bring the outdoors in or the indoors out. So that's where the porch come, came into play. So our neighbors, um, the Kelly's on one side of us, they, they put a porch on a few years back and it was like, oh man, this is great. Every time I walk by with the dogs, I'll see them and I'm like, I'd love that. Love to sit out there and just you watch the world go by. You talk to your neighbors, you see the kids playing, just brings that whole, continues with that whole community feel. So those were the five items that we saw as they were the hot items for us to make this house our forever home. So we've, over the last few months, we've worked with Joe to come, come up with the design and man, it went through a lot of iterations and we thought we were inside all of the rules, right? And then we just like, oh no, it was one that we didn't realize, which was
The sight line.
The sight line or, you know, be the alignment with your neighbors. So that, that's the one that called us, um, and then why we're here. Uh, so since, since then, you know, we obviously work, we've been talking with our neighbors, um, all around us to here's our plans, here's what we want to do. And unanimously are very supportive of what we want to do to the house. I love what it's going to, how the house will look because right now it's, you know, forty seven, since nineteen forty seven, it hasn't changed. So it's just, it's really tired. It's not particularly attractive. This brings us just freshens the front like hugely and will make it a beautiful home.
Well, it provides curb appeal, you know? And the other part of it is, is all our neighbors have signed off on a letter. I think Hank, I sent those to you saying that they, they agree with the plans and the variants.
We did receive those and I did forward those on to the zoning board.
Yep. So it, it, it's also a matter of my mom stayed with us for like six months because, you know, she's, she's single now. My dad passed away and she was also saying, you know, I'd love to come live with you for six months out of the year. So another part of me says, okay, well, if we extend our master bedroom, eventually she can have that. We have a daughter that's going to college next year and she has a suite upstairs. We can move upstairs. It, it's really to do the right thing with my mom as well. You know, we're trying to make as much space as possible and make it comfortable for all of us to live here in harmony. Or what you call aging in place. I call it harmony. I'm not sure what you call it, but I call it harmony.
Those would be wonderful.
Yeah. So, you know, and I'm an only child. So if my mom kind of not, I'm not going to say falls on me, but she's, her and I are very close and she would love to come and spend some time with us. So that was another reason why we looked at the master bedroom and said, if we pushed it out, there would be a nice porch, you know, for her to sit on. There would be, you know, great, just a great opportunity for her to enjoy her later years as well.
They're short-lived. Yes.
Mr. Chair, perhaps before I go into what I was going to, uh, put up on the screen for us, perhaps the architect can address what the practical difficulty or hardship might be as to why they have to, uh, have a front yard setback variance in order to accomplish their project.
I, I, I would agree with that completely.
Uh, this, this house sits on a curved street, Roy Court. Uh, we were, we were substantially within the front yard setback as tabulated in a rectilinear and perpendicular world. Roy Court is a oval shaped road, as you know. There's no way anybody can see a straight line event because no matter what you see is a tangent as opposed to parallel lines in space. The way the ordinance is written is to protect those parallel lines. In this case, they do not exist. So on this site, this ordinance somehow seems to be imposed where practicality and reality coincide and they literally never converge. You cannot see a straight line on a curved plane. So we're asking you for your indulgence here and your support to allow this to occur on this, on this curved street where the neighbors have no objections and, and we are again well within the tabulated. We didn't push the setback by any means. We just, we just extended the building far enough to make a comfortable porch, not a grand porch, not a gracious, not exceeding the setbacks, not pushing the envelope, but just minimally to allow this to exist in a meaningful way. And that's about the, that's about it.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah.
Hank?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I'm going to share the screen here. Okay, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay. So basically this is what the house looks like now. And this is where we're at. We're looking for the setback variance of about nine and a half feet roughly. This is the part of Roy Court that they're on, and this is the house. So you can kind of get an idea of how the neighboring houses line up. That's an aerial view provided by Oakland County. So this is where they're actually pretty similar in nature. The curve starts a little bit like right over here, if you can see where my cursor is. This is the plot plan and this is the survey actually for what you have. This shows the existing line of the house. This shows the projected line of the new addition. This shows the front house next door. This shows the front house next door to the other side. So that kind of gives you an idea of where it sits and where we got our criteria from. So the house technically should be at forty point oh, seven, and it's going to be at thirty eight sixty-four. Oh, I'm sorry. No, not thirty and sixty-four, thirty point sixty-five. This again is the aerial view side by side to the survey. So you can see where they're at and what the houses are. And this shows them lined up on the block and this shows them lined up on the survey. And again, this is where they're at and this is the rule that states that where the existing residents, uh, existing residents and dwellings on both sides of subject property, um, subject lot front of the same street to encourage setbacks should be no less than the least of the two adjoining front setbacks, which is where we get the forty point oh, seven. Um, so that kind of explains where it is that we get it. And in no case shall be less than this listed in the schedule of regulations, which would be the 30 feet that Joe was looking at originally. These are the elevations of the house. The planning commission did compliment Mr. Nowitzki on the fact that he did do a really nice design for the front of the house. This is what it is currently up here. This is what it's proposed. This is what the existing west elevation is right now. This is what it would be and this space would be added to the front of the house. This is the existing other side of the house. And this is the existing house with the elevation added on so that everybody can see that. Okay, so here's the criteria that they have to answer. Special or unique conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure or building involved and which are not generally applicable to other land structures or building in the same district. That would be one thing that they would have to satisfy. The second, the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. And that could be determined by them addressing the sightlines, by the neighbors acknowledging that they're fine with it, although that is not a criteria or a sole criteria for approval of the project. It's good to know, but it's not the criteria. Three, special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. In other words, uh, could this be added on in a different portion of the house and not require a variance and give them the square footage that they need? Four, a literal interpretations of the provision of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance and that the variance is the minimum necessary. Um, if you have any questions, if you would like, I'll leave any part, some of this up. I can actually revisit this if anybody wants to see it or comment on it. If not, Mr. Chair, I'm going to stop my screen share and we can go back to conversation.
Okay. Thanks, Hank.
You have some public.
Okay. Are there any commissioners who, I mean, uh, board members who want to talk about it right now? You got a solid
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mitch.
This is addressed to Hank.
Yes, sir.
Hank, the, this is a case of where the front setback is determined either by a set distance or by the relationship to the adjoining homes. Is that right?
That is exactly correct.
Now, if we, if we didn't have the relationship to the adjoining homes, is the proposed setback lawful as is?
The proposed setback would be lawful if it wasn't governed by the, uh, adjoining homes.
So in other words, the adjoining homes could be as close to the front as the applicant here may wishes to make their home.
They could be, but they're not.
The problem we're facing
Need a variance as well at this point.
And I mean, it seems to me the problem is that the adjoining neighbors elected to build their houses too far back. Not that these people are trying to build their homes too close.
Actually, the, uh, setbacks in the houses were built prior to the zoning ordinance front setback being in place.
Right. Well, but I'm just making a point that
You, you Is, is, is your point, uh,
They want to add on a porch.
No, they want to add on a house. They want living space as well.
Well, this is kind of living space, not just porch.
Yes, it is living space as well. If it was just porch, we wouldn't be here.
And the argument is, I mean, the curved part of, maybe somebody can speak to it, but from the aerial that you showed didn't look very curved.
That they're on the flat part of the street.
So the curve argument is, is neither here nor there argument.
Well, I, that's, that's a, that's up to the zoning board of appeals.
I know, I'm making my point.
Okay.
If you want to attribute that somehow there's the entire of East Roy Court would be brought into that, but in terms of the immediate adjoining homes, they're on the same plane, basically.
That is correct.
So they want to build a house where you're not supposed to build the house.
That is correct.
So that's the problem. Of course, I just point out that last week, we, the last meeting, we approved a completely unapprovable variance based on aging in place theory. So if we wanted to apply that tonight, we could also.
Yeah, the context for that also is, is that, uh, that was also approved in the rear portion of the house.
I'm talking about the, the work in the studio.
Yeah, that was in the rear of the house. This is a front addition.
But at least equally unapprovable.
The theory
That's the end of my discussion.
Okay.
I've got a quick question, Hank, and maybe a misunderstanding, but if, if we grant this variance tonight, would the, would the adjoining homes then be able to, at some point in the future, be able to build out as far as this house is now?
This house has granted a variance to do this, but the way that the ordinance says they would, but I would reserve comment until I would consult with the city attorney whether the variance is granted only for that property or whether or not this sets precedence and all the other houses can move forward.
It's a brilliant idea, sort of a stepping stone approach.
It, it
Or piggyback maybe is
Right, it'd be more of a piggyback Mitch. It's, uh, yeah. Um, yeah. And it wouldn't be something necessarily, it's not, I mean, the applicant would be able to take advantage of it. It would be either their current neighbors or subsequent neighbors in the future at some point.
Yeah. Good point.
Thanks, Adam. I'm going to open it up to public participation. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Please let us know your ad, your name and address.
Tom Kelly. I'm skiing today, but I've taken time out of my busy schedule. Uh, we're the next door neighbors. Uh, if you're facing the Osbornes' house, we're on the left. Uh, we've, we moved in shortly before the Osbornes moved in in 2010. Um, and, uh, we're happy with the plans that they presented. They spent a lot of time with my wife and I. Uh, we actually came before the ZBA and built our porch, uh, and got a six inch variant. So it's not as, that wasn't as, as big as this one, but it was, it was, uh, we also came before the ZBA and Hank helped us with that and it looks beautiful. Uh, and I think, uh, the Osbornes have been envious ever since.
Um, for the record, could you just state your address, please?
Yeah, two, five, one, three, nine, East Roy Court.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
So we just want to say I'm supportive and so is my wife Lisa.
Thanks, Tom. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak about this issue? Not seeing, I'm going to close the public participation portion of the, uh, of, of the meeting and throw it to the board members for more discussion.
Hey, Gordon, I've got a couple of questions. Um, one, one for Hank. In, in the grand scheme of how we, the city was developed in that whole sightline thing, um, what was the purpose behind that?
Well, when you have fronts, you, number one, you're regulating the green space in front of the houses. So basically first house on the block determines where the setbacks are going to be. And typically even when there's no zoning or there's no setback laws or rules and regulations, typically the houses follow each other so that you have consistent front yards. That's the one concept with it. The second concept is, is that for safety issues, you can look down the street and see what's going on without having to worry about, I can't see behind this building. This is out, this is not, this is different. The third thing is, is that you also regulate fence laws and other ordinances as to where the house is placed. So, uh, whereas a fence that could go up to three feet in front of a side yard, um, or half the distance of the house would be impacted by something like this and could have, and could perchance go into a front yard of a next knit door neighbor, they could be looking out their door at a front yard. Um, those are just some of the things for it, but typically front yard setbacks are consistent and they're consistent based on the neighborhood and the established front building lines. For example, in the Bronx subdivision, they're 25 feet and you'll be hard pressed to find one that isn't. Um, you know, in R one C, they're 30 feet. And for the most part, you'd be hard pressed to find one that isn't or, or more. Um, you know, the, uh, R one B and R one A districts have different setbacks as well. And that's why you'll notice like up to 40 feet for those. So you'll, you'll notice that there's a difference in how far they're set back. And part of that relates to the lot size, the proximity from the property line. Um, also the proximity for the street because sidewalks are laid out differently in different areas. So those are some of the things. Um, I hope that answers what you were trying to get at.
It, it does. I just was, yeah, then my next, um, comment is around, uh, Mitch mentioned, mentioned it a little bit and so did, uh, um, Shelley Osborne, uh, the aging in place or what did you call it, Shelley, harmony?
Harmony.
Um, that's a new one for me, but, um, it, you know, we, um, there's also another, I mean, that's, that's a, uh, that's part of the city master plan. We had a big discussion about that last time, as Mitch mentioned. Uh, the other thing too, that, that has come up is, uh, in looking at your plans, um, you really can't do that going back because you could go back, right? You, you could go back and, and just leave the front line there. Um, but looking at what you're trying to do, it, it really doesn't make sense. And I, I'm not an architect, but I, you know, I looked at the plans beforehand. Uh, you can't go back and do it because then it would be completely rearranging and cost factor would be through the roof. And the architect would probably like it because his pay would go up, but
Yeah.
Um,
I'm going to get the job.
We've had that come in front of us before. Um, I'm remembering, uh, the Call hands down here where they couldn't move it over to the other side where there was room because it was part of the garage. And, um, so this is really, I mean, it, it makes sense to do where you're, you're, you're putting, right? You're, it's kind of in a hardship spot that you can't put it in the back. I mean, you could, but you would rearrange your whole house, which it financially just doesn't make sense. And, um, the idea of the aging in place with the mother, uh, the mother-in-law, uh, Mark, you have my sympathies of having a mother-in-law issue.
She's a lovely lady.
But I, I think that, um, I, I, I'm comfortable with what, what we've just talked about and in based on our long, lengthy discussion last week or the last meeting around this with the aging in place and what we, um, we looked at, uh, with the other one. But I, I just wanted to bring up for those that are, I, I know, I know it's case by case, but, uh, some of the things that when, uh, Callahan's came to mind, uh, the house, Mike, that's right across, uh, the street basically from you or two houses down, uh, where they went to the addition off to the right versus back behind the garage, which would have made them, they could have done that all day long, but it didn't make sense with the footprint of the house.
Correct.
Okay. I'm done.
Anyone else?
Well, I've just observed that this, like you were saying, Hank, like the neighbor, uh, support or opposition doesn't ever, I don't think, make or break a proposal. This one, it seems, or this scenario, it seems to matter relatively more because even though we know it runs with the land and, and, you know, people can, can move and circumstances can change. This is, th- this is a, uh, very much contingent on the state of the circumstantial nature of the nearby properties as opposed to being a specific number of feet from, from the back or from the side, from the front. And it seems, it seems high, 40. Is it among the higher for, you know, the, it's not the acre sub. It's, so it does, it, it's a, it's a pretty big constraint into even before you think about grafting something on to the existing floor plan of a house. It, it seems like it would, uh, um, be a, a pretty, pretty substantial just in any case.
Oh, it's typically, um, just so that you're aware of how this works is, is that normally the houses, um, where you have like your 25 or 30 foot setbacks are roughly a hundred and 25 or a hundred and some deep, somewhere in that area. This particular lot's a hundred and 40 deep. Forty was established by the houses on the block and it wasn't established by ordinance at that time. It was established by one guy put their house there. So the next guy matched it. So the next guy matched it. And that's how you ended up with this. So basically it's consistent because when, um, one of the rules of design or architecture is, is that you follow your setback lines. And even back in the day before these were set up or this was platted in this manner with the zoning ordinance, um, these houses were built. Uh, so what they were built is with some measure of consistency. And you can see that by the original setbacks from where the house was. The one was forty point oh, seven. This one was 38.64. The other one was 40.64. So while they weren't all exactly the same, they were both in a close proximity. They were all in a close proximity to each other. And that was to kind of give it a more even homogeneous look as you went down the street. So what you need to decide is, is that, is this something that warrants breaking that up? And is the benefit outweigh what the consistency that you have is? So I mean, those are some questions that you
I have a question, Hank, let, let me ask you this to follow up.
Yes, sir.
What you're saying is that when this particular block was developed, like in the late forties or whenever, that placing the houses at the same distance from the, from the street, even though it wasn't codified in terms of front setback, once somebody's house was there, there was a custom to keep them all in line.
That is correct.
For whatever reason, aesthetics or who knows? You know, there's kind of a general view that if things are all lined up, it's not, it's good. It's morally good or something.
Well, that, yeah, I don't know if I would go there, but yeah.
Well, I mean, I think so, but that's my view. I think a lot of this is sort of people's feeling as the way it should be.
That's probably an accurate statement.
Decent neighborhood, you know, not fully So then what happens is the law, the zoning law was passed. Um, and they made the, the setback 30 feet in this district. Right?
Yeah.
So why did they do that?
Well, here's the thing. When you take houses and houses are categorized and you create zoning districts, you create them for a number of reasons. One is square footage of lot and that's probably your biggest one. Um, and the second is, is the area that you fall into. So there's a, there's a big generalization of an area and a lot of times houses that would be non-conforming get caught into areas, uh, where they will be legal, non-conforming lots, like for example, in the middle of the Bronx subdivision, which goes from Wyoming to, uh, Scotia, let's just take that part. You have, um, a block of You have a block of R1E, you have a whole stretch of R1E in the middle of it because those lots were all smaller or coupled together. So you have different blocks of houses that are zoned differently based on the lot sizes or the average lot size. So this tended to fall into, if you take a look at where Roy Court is, Roy Court is in the middle of a very large area of R1C. So rather than spot zone, which is a misnomer and make this a little bit different, these houses, these sized lots were consistent with the other lots in the neighborhood and fell into the R1C zoning.
I mean, I'm trying to figure out a rationale for approving this. To be honest, I, I think it's a, I don't know if other members of the board would agree, but it's not an easy one. You know, but because it's a grossly large variance. As, as somebody pointed out, it's visible from the street, which is meaningful. You, Hank, you've provided some rationales for why keeping the houses in a line may be reasonable other than aesthetics such as public safety. You know, the possibility that they would bring along other baggage like a fence that came into the front yard and so on.
Well, there, there's other things too, is I think that when you're looking at houses that were designed particularly in the 40s and 50s, one of the things that they all did was everybody tended in that day and age to congregate in the front of their houses, not in the back of their houses. So front lawns and front yard areas were plentiful. And the reason for that was is because when they sent the kids out to play, they didn't send them out in the backyard to play. They sent them out into the front yard to play. And that's, that's typical of that era. But that doesn't, you know.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, I, where I'm coming from is this. This is a brilliant plan for improving this home. The motivation is, is credible, but the personal circumstances of the applicant normally are not a rationale for improving a variance. And certainly legally not. The, what's being asked is it, it, it seems very hard to tie to one of the usual doctrines that we have developed for proving variances, which I suppose the closest we might come is some kind of architectural integrity argument that I think sort of was being suggested, but it very loose, you know, very broadly considered. Aging in place, well, I mean, I've been aging in place, it's pleasant. It's, it's an argument that everybody could use. They want to redesign their house so they can live there forever and they have the move, well, so what? You know, I mean, it's tricky because it sounds good, as I said, it sounds good. But I, I mean, I'm convinced that we approved the last one based on that with not much real basis to do it. And my, and I guess at this point, list, somebody, maybe the architect, someone else. I mean, architect, you tried that curve, curvature of the street argument.
If I, if I may.
If you can give us a rationale for why this is a practical difficulty based on the conditions of the home and the lot as they exist. That, that would be helpful.
I think that if anybody visited this site, they would agree with me. The straight line tangents with this was built on this whole ordinance gesture. We're not beyond the setbacks. We are beyond the tolerance of a post ordinance derivative. There's no straight lines. If you go on that site, you can't sit on their front lawn. I take photographs daily. I've been doing this for decades. I take the neighborhood context. The first shot I take is up and down the block. You cannot take a shot up and down the block because the road drifts away. That micro spot that we just looked at overhead shows those three homes, which are not contesting our, our, our ability to do this or desire to do this. Nobody's fighting us here. Except some, some, some notion that we have to stay in line. You can't stand on that lot and look three houses down and see a straight line either direction. This micro spot that we're looking overhead is not accurately representing the reality that exists there. And I kind of resent that part because we're looking at it as if it's a straight line. It's not. The only reason that ordinance exists there is to preserve the straight lines, which do not exist. And I can show you that. And if you want to table it and look next time, drive down the street, stand in this driveway and try and look at three houses up. Try and look at two houses up. You can't see them because they drift. It's a very gentle curve. It's an egg shaped street. It is not straight. So I believe that this thing overlaid on this site is just inconsequential to reality. It just has no bearing on reality. So you know, we can rationalize trying to push it one way or the other, but God, give these place, give these poor people a chance to age in place, protect their investment and move forward in a place that they want to stay at. This is, it's, it, you know, I gotta say, personally, my mother-in-law lived with me for three years. She's gone now. How long you think that's going to last? Unfortunately, our reality is pretty clear, guys. It's a short-lived event. They're building this for themselves. And if they want to sit on their front porch, I, I'm here to try and help them do that. That's all I'm trying to do. It's, it's just a way of life. Jane Jacobs said it 50 years ago. We should be on our front porches. So I, I say the straight line insistence here is misguided. And then we should take a look at reality here on this block, on this house, on this particular street. It is not possible to see three houses in a straight line. It's just not because it's a tangent, no matter how you look at it. And that micro spot that we looked at overhead is giving you a false impression of what's really there. Look at the map. You guys take, take, take five minutes and look at a map of that street.
I, I live, I, I live around the corner. I think you're, you're, the very, very first thing you said that the Osborne should speak for themselves was probably your, your best advice. Cause that was, it was just, it was a lot. But I, I think that if I can try to say with less math at this hour of the evening, I do, I understand, I think because there isn't a, a cross street because of the, the, the shape of the, of the street. It is, it is different from like my block on Borgman where you, you see a cross and, and you have the, the canopy of the, you know, the trees on the, on the outside of the sidewalk and the fronts of the house. I, I think that it is, you can differentiate it somewhat by the nature of Roy Court. It's not on the curve, but if you, you know, I was just like looking around from a aerial view and the house that's sort of behind it, the, the faces that's wet 25206 West Roy Court, so a little bit closer to the curve, jots out pretty substantially. It sort of matches the house where the street curves, but then it's, it's visibly out in front of the other houses, the next few houses over. So I, I, I mean, I think there's, I think there's something, there's something there. I'm not sure if that's the, the toehold or not.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so on our street, not any house is the same. And Huntington Woods is known as an eclectic neighborhood for their architecture. Right? People want to come here because they want to improve their lives. They want to improve their home. That's all we're trying to do is just improve our home and give my mom more space. That, that's really it. And the curb appeal right now to our house is nil. I mean, we had a Realtor come out and she's like, yeah, you gotta do something. So I, we came up, Mark and I and Joe came up with this, we're like, why don't we put a front porch on? And everybody around us was like, that's a great idea. Like why, that's what we need to go back to. That's, that's the community we're trying to build still is to be eclectic and be different on every street, but yet still maintain some sort of friendly atmosphere. So when neighbors walk by, it's a, hi, how you doing? Instead of us being in our backyard. So on our street, again, there is not one house that looks exactly the same. It isn't a straight line. It's, it's, it's an oval. We live on an island. I call it the island. Because it's west, east Roy Court. So you have houses that are curved and you have other houses. None of the houses on the island look anything alike.
Mr. Chair, would it help if I put up a, a aerial of the, of a broader selection of that?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I just did, I just want to make sure that they get a chance to explain what it is.
I'm trying to find it and I'm not being, I'm not getting there right away.
No, I've.
And I, I see what you're, you're saying because I pulled it up on my, on my phone as you guys were talking. West Roy Court side.
Can you hear that? Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Their lot is in red.
The one that says eight, three, zero is the one that I was talking about, kind of behind it of West Roy Court.
Well, they seem to all set back as you, as you look at that line, when you go from eight, three to eight, 29 to eight, 27, eight, 26. And then it appears to go forward again with eight, 24. Now that'd be maybe an optical illusion. I don't know.
This is an aerial that's provided to us by Oakland County. So I mean, this is the reason, my interest in putting this up was just to make sure that everybody gets a chance in it to the extent that it helps them with their project. At least you have had the chance to take a look at the aerial and see what it is.
Okay, thanks, Hank. Any, any more discussion?
I just have just one last comment. I, I'm going back to Mitch's. I'm going to say angst of trying to find something to latch this on to. And I, you know, I've been on, I've been on the zoning board for a number of years and we've had these come more and more lately, the aging in place. But I, aging in place is a, is something we should be concerned about and, and look at. And I think this is twofold and it goes back to the structure. It may be the best solution is, I, you know, number three, that's in the, that's been given to us. Where, what I was talking about before, if they're wanting to age in place and they want to make some accommodations to the house, some changes to the house, they could easily do it going into the back. It's just, but it doesn't fit with the rest of the footprint of the house. Whereas by going up front, the solution is solved with the variance. So they, they get the extra nine or 10 feet that they're asking for, nine and a half feet. I'm less concerned of the continuity because of what I've seen on the, on the flip side of the west, west court of how those homes vary in that straight line concept.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep, that's it.
Are you, are Gordon, are you planning to ask for a motion and then have discussion after the motion?
Yeah, I was probably going to do that, but we don't have to.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, it, I'm, is there somebody who's prepared to make a motion? I'm still struggling with this.
Yeah, I, 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 I sense that.
I, I mean, I'd be willing to, I, I'd just like, let me make a comment. This is really for the applicant and the applicant's architect. I've been on the zoning board of appeals off and on for a long time. And I've also in professional life appeared in front of zoning board of appeals, other cities. That you will not find a more sympathetic to homeowner pro variance board anywhere than this board. And we try very hard to grant variances. So there's no reason for a feeling that we're trying to be hostile or not, not take the desires of the homeowners who are applying to, you know, fix their houses up into account. I, on the contrary, we, we, we have adopted and approved a lot of stuff that in most communities would not be approved. And usually the one thing we have to do is follow Michigan law. At least to some extent, given our discretion. And Michigan law requires some kind of objective factor other than the wishes of the homeowner. When I first started on the zoning board in my first, first tour many years ago, there was a characteristic in some of the members to approve projects they thought were nice and to disapprove projects they didn't like. And that seemed to me just completely corrupt. And that what you have to do is try to hang your hat on a variance that actually does grow out of a profit, practical difficulty of the way the property is shaped and what the owners inherited when they acquired. We're getting, and usually we can find something. But we're teetering close to the edge with this aging in place idea. I really feel that because if you think about it, if you have somebody who's going to age in place and then maybe they're 60 years old or something and it seems sort of plausible. And somebody else, a very fine young couple who's 25 years old and they just want to improve their home. So they raise their kids in the home, but chances are they're going to all move away. How, why should they be treated any different when it comes to how far the home should extend toward the street? You know, there's nothing to do with the, the shape of the property. That's what I'm struggling with. I, I think the best bet here is to some kind of an argument based on the architectural integrity of the, of the home as built. And, and that the proposed design continues the architectural facts of the home as built. And that any other way of enlarging the home for, for use as the applicant's intended would be irrational from an architectural standpoint and way out of line with cost and, and other factors. And therefore, and then we have in the past approved variances based on that, that there's sort of a direction that, that the architectural shape of, of the home externally, internally dictates. And that it would be worth a variance to continue and build off that as compared to something else that just is, is irrational, but fits the letter of the law. That's the furthest I can go with this. I just throw it out there. If somebody makes a motion, I, I would not approve an aging in place variance for this place.
So some of you have a lot more planning committees. It's my dog. He's very, very, uh, lots more. You can probably hear him, Todd, for Michael. But so, right, I don't have much insight into the, the planning commission, but they, they approved this pending ZBA approval or where did it, where, where did, where is it in?
The planning commission approved it pending ZBA approval because the province of granting variance is not theirs. And I will say this, that Mr. Nowitzki made an excellent design for the front of this house. There, there's no doubt that architecturally, this is a vast improvement over what is there. The issue is, is that it goes into the front yard. I mean, that's, that's why we're here. So the planning commission endorsement of this is endorsement of the design criteria, the standards used to build in the city of Huntington Woods, but does not relate to the setbacks because that's the province of the zoning board of appeals. If we're going to deviate from that, so that's why it's approved pending zoning board of appeals approval. If you choose to approve this, they can come in for permit tomorrow. If you choose not to approve it, they have to go back and redesign the project. So that's where they're at with it. That's the, you know, cut and dry aspects of it. So either there is or is not a rationale for the zoning board of appeals to hang their hat on. And based on that, as usual, you'll need four of the seven votes in order to move this forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mitch.
All right, I move to approve the requested variance. The grounds are twofold. Number one, it's reasonable for the applicants to wish to enlarge their house, redesign the interior for continuing use. Number two, the architectural character of the home and the way it is built in specific terms dictate the solution that Mr. Nowitzki has come out with as opposed to another solution that might conceivably require a lesser variance or no variance, which would not serve the legitimate purposes of the homeowner.
Second or further discussion?
I think Ben got the second.
I think Ben got the second before me.
That's right. I guess, I mean, I don't know if it needs to be in the language of the, of the motion, but I, I think, I, I agree with that. And I think the, the unique circumstance or the, the thing that's beyond the, the Osburn's control is the pre-existing setbacks of the adjacent properties, which doesn't solve for like the minimum necessary part, but that is, I think there, I think that, and Mitch, I'm not, I'm not trying to amend the motion. I'm just, I'm just agreeing with you and, and maybe, maybe being useful or maybe clouding.
Do we have a, a second?
Yeah.
You have Ben. All right, then we can have our discussion.
Right. Now, uh, does anybody want to make a comment?
Talked enough.
All right, we have a motion in front of us. We're going to vote for it. Do I do roll call again? Hank?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, I'll vote for the, I'll vote yes.
Mitch?
Support.
Ben?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Mike?
Uh, I can't vote on this one. I voted at the planning commission.
Okay. All right, uh, are there any, uh, let's see, Ben?
That's everybody, I think.
That's everyone.
Yep, that's all of us.
All right, I, I, I vote to approve too.
Okay, so you have a six to nothing vote with one abstention on the part of Michael Wright, who voted on it as a planning commission chairperson.
Okay.
So the project is approved.
Yeah.
Thank you, folks. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Looks like a nice plan.
Buck.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Uh, let's see, moving along, I want to open it again to public, uh, public participation. Is there anybody from the general public who wishes to say anything? Please do so, uh, now and state your name and your address. Not seeing any, I'm closing the, uh, the public participation part of the meeting. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, at this point in time, I do want to make a comment here. Um, for some of you, this is the last meeting on the zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
I, don't, don't laugh too hard, Todd, because we have other places to put you. So, um, having said that, uh, I want to thank both Todd and Gordon for their expert leadership and advice and, uh, their commitment to the zoning board of appeals. Um, they'll be retiring for a minimum of a year unless they go on to another board or commission. Um, Gordon, your leadership has been fabulous for the zoning board of appeals. Uh, Todd, you've always had a level head and a good thought process and the residents of the city appreciate both of your work and, uh, as do I. So I, I didn't want to let the meeting go without making a public statement as to that. You guys are great. We've appreciated you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got to, it's been great working with you guys.
Yeah. I've learned a lot.
Well, we may see each other in the future.
Yes, you may. The near future, yes. Um, so having said that, there will be an election of officers at the next meeting, um, based on appointments. So we'll have a full complement in order to make sure that we have, uh, the, you know, like the, there'll be a couple more voting members that will be coming on, um, that will have that. And then there will be new alternates. So having said that, I have nothing further until the January meeting.
Did I ask, who is, who are the officers now?
Well, Mitch, you would be the vice chair and, uh, Gordon would be the chair.
So.
Gordon is, is. A lot of fun.
I've been the chair. Is Gordon going to be at the next meeting?
Gordon will not be at the next meeting.
So that means the vice chair would chair?
Vice chair will chair the next meeting.
You have to wear a tie, right?
And I will say this, I will say this, um, it's not that Mitch hasn't had any experience chairing these boards because Mitch was on the zoning board of appeals back many, 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 many years ago, before I even worked for the city. So Mitch is a, uh, has a tremendous amount of longevity with this.
Well, Hank, you were on the board when I was on the board.
I know. We were actually at this together, so. But, uh, again, thank you both very much and, uh, we'll look forward to the election in January. Mr. Chair, I don't have anything else.
Okay, anybody else?
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I gotta go roll call. Adam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Did I get you, Adam?
You got me.
Mitch and Todd.
Yeah, you need Mitch, Todd.
Aye.
Where everybody go?
Uh, and I, Todd says aye.
Okay. Mitch, you say aye?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, folks.
Happy holidays.
See you guys.
Very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.